I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, a regular meeting on Wednesday, April 26th, and we'll start by pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to do public input first, so I don't know if anybody has any public input they want to make at this point, or if not. Okay. Our first order of business then is a presentation by, from Green Harbor Dispensary regarding a proposal for a medical marijuana dispensary and cultivation facility in Dayton, so.
Vicky Piazza, Chair of the Development and Industrial Commission, and I have here tonight Dick Schaefer from Fountain and Mr. Schnibby from Green Harbor, and they will be making the presentation this evening and open to questions from you all.
And this is, by the way, this is just an informational, this is just a broad proposal because the Board of Selectmen doesn't have the authority to approve or disapprove of this. It would have to go through planning and zoning, all that kind of stuff, so this is just to make us familiar with what you might be proposing, so.
And this is dispensary, not recreational.
Right.
You mean, medical?
Medical.
Medical. It's a medical dispensary, medical marijuana.
If you don't mind, I'm just going to take my coat off, because...
Yeah.
Oh, you might want to keep it on, it's freezing.
Anyway, thank you, we're delighted to be here. I'm Bob Schnibby, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Green Harbor Dispensary. I'm joined by two of my colleagues, Bob Karp, who's our Chief Operating Officer and a licensed attorney in Massachusetts, actually an expert on medical marijuana and all things legal related to marijuana. He's also the author of two Amazon bestselling books on the business of medical marijuana and marijuana audit in general. And then also Mike Patel, who is our Chief Financial Officer. Mike is a small business owner, he has several package stores, convenience stores, et cetera, in Massachusetts and in other states in the region. What we're hoping to accomplish today is to acquaint you with the Green Harbor. I'll go through my deck, I don't think I'm going to drag you over the broken glass on every page or anything, I'll just kind of touch on some of the high spots so you get to know us a little bit. But what we're seeking is, we're trying to find a town, or several towns, that we can open a medical marijuana dispensary, and in the case of Dayton, also have a cultivation site, roughly a 35, 37,000 square foot growth facility. So let me kind of just touch on it, you know, I think we have, I think what differentiates the Green Harbor from a lot of other firms out there that are trying to do the same thing is that we have kind of a very experienced, kind of, you can tell gray hair and no hair is kind of our moniker here. We, I'm an ex-hospital administrator, I started my career in New York City Health and Hospital Corporation, I ran all of operations for several large, major medical centers, including pharmacy, labs, all the back office kind of operation supports areas. And I first became intrigued with this when my two parents were both dying of cancer, both were on morphine drips their last several months, and there really wasn't a good alternative. And the more I studied the subject, the more I studied the industry, I felt that there were some really viable alternatives to people that have acute pain management, PTSD, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of what drove me into the, into this business. My team, as I said, are experienced professionals, we bring healthcare experience to the party. In fact, our Head of Standards and Practices is a licensed pharmacist in the state of Massachusetts. We have small business experience, we have legal experience, we have operations experience, and this is all practical, verifiable experience that we bring to bear on the development of a dispensary network.
Do you have any of these open anyplace else?
Not yet.
Not yet. Here's the first, okay.
We are a not-for-profit, as people understand that, we're a not-for-profit, the Green Harbor Dispensary. We are a not-for-profit in good standing. We're currently, we've just, well, we've entered a while ago the third and final phase of this process, so that folks that aren't familiar with it, there's the initial phase of who are you, background checks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, including investors as well as management team and Board of Directors. That's followed by a management and operations process that takes forever to get through from a DPH standpoint, probably 50, 60 questions, long-form essay questions that you have to get through, series of iterations, Q and A, and then eventually invited to sit in profile. And that's where we are right now. So basically, what we need to do is nail down some sites, including a cultivation facility, submit our whole package to DPH, and hopefully they'll give us a, you know, an approval to proceed. And that proceed, that license is not as simple as, okay, you're good to go, you can start selling tomorrow, you then begin the really tough process, which is building it out, meeting all the compliance issues, et cetera, et cetera, and then ultimately opening. And I think you can, as you can see here, we have, you know, a pretty impressive management team, you have our bios in here. Cultivation, I mean, from our standpoint, the perfect ideal situation is to find a town where we can have a dispensary and a cultivation facility. Where that benefits us is that we don't really want to transport product long distances, so if we can have it co-located within a reasonable location, even in the same building, it would be, you know, preferable. So I think that, you know, that's what attracts us to the real estate opportunities in your town, because it seems like we could have that. I'm told that there are people that are growing in the western part of the state and distributing in the eastern part of the state, and it just concerns me from a public safety standpoint that they'll be transporting not only product but cash, those large instances. One thing that we take very seriously today, and unfortunately, our Head of Security, Ryan Windmill, couldn't be here, but we think we have probably the strongest security construct in the industry in Massachusetts. The Windmill Group, who is our security partner, is ex-FEMA, ex-Homeland Security, ex-FBI, ex-Boston State Police, ex-Boston Fire. They, for example, they just covered the Republican inauguration. These guys are top-notch, they know exactly what they're doing, they bring a very robust, thoughtful plan to the whole program. And I'll just touch on that, basically, what we do is, we kind of have a three-phase approach. We do a detailed risk assessment of each of our sites, working very closely with public safety, both fire and police, and anyone else who wants to participate. So we basically assess the conditions, assess the building, and then make recommendations of how we would essentially set it up. We then put together a security plan and a concept of operations, so this is kind of, once again, working hand-in-hand with public safety. How are we going to operate this thing, what kind of training are we going to give local public safety folks, as well as people in the dispensary and the cultivation sites? So we, you know, we take that all, you know, very, very seriously. And then we basically put in place the security system design and procurement, and that means buying cameras, optical character recognition, whatever we need to ensure that we meet, we meet standard and exceed standard. In fact, we even have, in our typical program, emergency buttons in the dispensaries and cultivations that are directly wired into public safety if we need to. So we try to make that a non-issue, we try to build a joint cooperative thoughtful plan, and we get it done. And the Windmill Group, I know I said I don't have any other facilities, but they have supported the medical marijuana industry in Colorado, Washington, Oregon, Nevada, Illinois, and they currently have three clients in Massachusetts where one of them, the other two are actually opened and operating.
Now, do you see any impact on our public safety, any additional need for public safety?
And do you have private security? Because I know you have all this security, and I was just wondering, would you have someone on-site?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we would have somebody on-site, probably 24 by 7 in the cultivation site, hours of operations at the dispensary location. It would probably be a third party, but obviously, we'd want to work out the economics. It might make more sense to make them employees. But yes, we would do that. What was the other?
I was just going to say, what's going to be the impact on our public safety personnel?
You see, I, it's tough for me to say that, and let me kind of tie that into the next thing that I'm going to talk about. Because we're a not-for-profit, and we're a tax-exempt organization in Massachusetts, firms like ours are willing to enter into what they call community hosting agreements with our town, which is really, really our way of sharing in our success. I say that in the context of your question, because I would want to sit down with public safety here in town and understand what they think the impact's going to be. And then structure a community hosting agreement that makes them whole, you know, because it's a lot easier for us at the Green Harbor if we can wrap our head around, gee, that's going to mean 1.5 police officers. Okay, I can, I can understand that, and I can dimension it, and I can embed it into a community hosting agreement. If we just pick a number out of thin air, it doesn't...
No, I'm not looking for a number, I just, I want... Does it impact public safety, that's probably a better way?
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be naive to say it wouldn't impact public safety, but I think every town has their own way of approaching these things. And I think we just need to be receptive to working with that.
Would the impact on public, local public safety be related to traffic control and things? Because you said you're going to have your own security on the premises?
Yeah.
Private security. So would it be, again, the town streets or traffic or whatever?
I would say that that is one component of the impact, public safety. I don't envision, I think a typical dispensary probably sees, I don't know, 100, 150, maybe 200 cars. Worst case, you know, it just depends on where you're located and whether there's public transportation available, et cetera, et cetera. In most instances, in the towns we've spoken to, that's not a problem. I think that the concern is more about surveillance, driving by, checking in, like, you know, if I have a delivery, you know, that I schedule at 10 o'clock every morning at the dispensary, it may make sense to have someone from the police department there, at least initially. I mean, I think, I think we can all read stories about, you know, what's happening out west, and even here in the state with the dispensaries that are open. I think people are somewhat surprised that there's not been, you know, that the world hasn't blown up.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean you can't be cautious, and I would always err on the side of being cautious, and then seeing how the program is going, make adjustments where we need to make adjustments, one way or the other. So I see that from the standpoint of surveillance, I see, you know, support in deliveries and things of that nature. I do see some, you know, some traffic impact. I also think that there's an impact from the standpoint of training. So if we want to train your public safety team on what it's like to have a dispensary and cultivation site in town, I think that's a unit of work, and I think that's going to require some time. Similarly, my team in the dispensary and in the cultivation site, I want them well-versed in town practices and procedures, et cetera, so, you know, so there's a, you know, a training. And it's not only one time, it's ongoing. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, an integration really of the safety issues, yeah?
Just as an aside, I have brought our draft community hosting agreement. It recognizes it's a starting point, so ideally, if we're successful with you and you want to continue our discussions, I would hope to sit down with the selectmen, or a town manager, or whoever, and kind of go through all the components of this. I think one of the things that's different about Green Harbor, it's not like we drop it on the table and say, you know, one size fits all. I use the analogy, I think I even have it in the presentation, that the clay is not dry. We want to, we want to shape a program that you feel comfortable with, we feel comfortable with, and works for both of us.
Makes sense.
So... One of the questions I think that often comes up, people say, you know, why my town? I mean, I think it's important to answer the question that it's a pretty competitive environment out there in the medical marijuana business. I think that whole competition has been somewhat made more complex and confusing by recreational marijuana, which still, we still don't know what all the laws are going to mean. One of the things I think we do that makes us unique is that we, we basically, and I'll maybe let Bob say a bit about this, is what we do is, we go to the Center for Disease Control, and we actually look for a disease overlay on the east, southern, eastern, southern coast of Massachusetts, for, and we screen for diseases that are treatable through medical marijuana, and we, you know, so for example, the incidence of cancer is extremely high in, on the south coast of Massachusetts. PTSD is high, ALS is high, type 2 diabetes is off the charts. I'm not saying that, you know, all of these diseases can be treated to a lesser or greater degree with medical marijuana, but the fact is, we take a scientific approach. We want to be in locations where we can do the most good and help the most people, just that simple. And I think because of your proximity to Route 24, et cetera, it just makes it an ideal location, and I think my whole point is that if I can find a town that is supportive and embraces what we're trying to do versus, you know, slugging it out, I mean, obviously we want to have somebody that, you know, a partner that we can work with. One other thing on the community hosting agreement, and then I'll turn it over to Bob very quickly, is that in addition to sharing in our, you know, our revenue through a compensation model, it would be our intent to also use town residents to staff our dispensary and cultivation sites. A typical dispensary can, is probably somewhere between six and 12 full-time equivalents of cultivation site, and recognizing this, we're trying to use and take advantage of the most automation that the industry is offering today, but I'd say, you know, a 40,000 square foot cultivation site would probably employ 15 to 25 individuals, probably on several shifts.
Do you have to have special expertise to work in the cultivation site?
For some areas you do, particularly Chief Cultivation Officer, you need to know exactly what you're doing. I'd say the growers need to know what they're doing, but most of these skills, I think, are easily learned and transferred, so, you know, it may be more of a train-the-trainer kind of a thing, where you...
Okay, I don't know if there was a degree in, you know, agriculture or something.
There are degrees, and there are universities and semi-universities popping all up all over the country that are teaching some of these skills. And, you know, interestingly enough, a lot of people that migrated west when the industry kind of kicked off in Colorado and Washington, really want Massachusetts to be their home, but unfortunately, that's where the opportunity is. So we're seeing and reading about and being contacted by people that want to move back with those skills, so.
Now, how many people would you say the cultivation area would...
15 to 25. I mean, from the standpoint as a business owner, I want to keep that number as low as possible. I mean, there are technologies, for example, there are drying devices and extraction devices and all these other kind of devices that don't require as much labor, so obviously, we try to employ that wherever possible.
So the six to 12 FTEs you were talking about, is that?
Dispensary owner.
Dispensary part, yeah.
So, you know, it just, you know, a lot of this depends on layout and how we organize it and structure, you know, program. But the other thing I wanted to mention is that we also would expect, in addition to hiring, you know, local residents for these positions, we'd also try to employ local contractors to help us build out our facilities. Not sure how much construction activity is in the town, but I think clearly, we would probably go out to bid for those kinds of services and make, you know, make local decisions wherever it makes sense to do so. The only thing I would say is, I think we would hope that we would have an opportunity to get up and off the ground before we start writing big checks to the town. I mean, I think when somebody embarks on this, and when somebody enters into a community hosting agreement, you people go through your thoughtful decision-making process, we want it, we want a win-win, we want it to be successful. And I think we would just need a little bit of a ramp to get to that point, but then I think you'd be very happy with the results on a going-forward basis. So I just, that's a paid political announcement.
Would you be tenants in the facility? Would you be tenants in the facility, or are you going to acquire the facility, the building?
It really depends on the opportunity. I don't know, Mike, are we thinking about buying or leasing? Leasing? Yeah. So, thank you. Maybe lease with an option to buy?
With the potential to buy, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously...
If everybody was winning, right?
Yes, yes. Assuming that the landlord would be receptive.
Would you, if nothing was available, would you build or, you know, have somebody build for you and then lease it, or, and it's probably too early to even ask that question.
I mean, I think that's, that's a possibility. You see, the problem is, all those things take time.
I know, right.
And I mean, having an existing structure...
And you're already going to get the site up and running, never mind get the building built, so I understand.
And that doesn't preclude us from in the future at the right time, once we have a track record, once we know what we're doing, that maybe we, you know, maybe we find another location nearby and we build out our state-of-the-art facility, but it's really about getting up and running as soon as we can. So that's really, well, I've got to say, Bob, do you just want to say a couple of words about how we pick locations and CDC, and maybe some of your background?
Absolutely. I'd like to just share this with you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Bob Karp. I'm an attorney here in Massachusetts, I represent marijuana clients throughout globally. And one of the reasons I'm working with Green Harbor is it's a very thoughtful, very intelligent, and most importantly for your town, a very transparent approach. A lot of people are afraid of having a medical marijuana dispensary or cultivation facility in the town because they're afraid of crime, diversion, some of the other issues it brings, but I'd like to just put some of that to rest. The state has come up with regulations, which my firm originally drafted and then were modified by the state, to ensure that we are good neighbors, for starters. One of the concerns, obviously, is working with public safety. Public safety will have all they need to ensure that this works right, because there are cameras literally all throughout the facility except in the restrooms, and all cameras are what's known as IP-based, so anyone who wants to watch plants grow can turn in if they want to watch it harvested, the whole facility, there are no secrets. Diversion is a huge problem in the industry, but we have safeguards that have been designed by the Windmill Group to ensure that we have what's known as seed-to-sale tracking. So in other words, from the moment a seed comes from the facility, we can track it all the way to the point where it's been harvested, any of the leaves that are cut off and used in oils. So the whole idea is that we make sure nothing leaves the back door, only the front door. Along with that, a lot of people are concerned, the smell of marijuana, and also the building, maybe an attractant. 99% of the people will drive by this building and have absolutely no idea, there are no signs on it because the state mandates that, and also, there are special kind of charcoal filters that will be used for air escaping and air being drawn in to ensure that there's absolutely no smell. Also ozone generators and CO2 generators to make sure that it looks like a very nondescript warehouse building, what's housed inside obviously is something different. Some of the other concerns that we were, or what made Dayton so attractive, it is a very much an agricultural community still, you have agricultural students, there's a tremendous chance for interns to physically come and learn the industry, because within the next 20 years, it could be tremendously even larger than the liquor industry. Consequently, there will be a great need. The employees are very well-paid, they are trained, it is a different form of growing than what people would consider greenhouse or something like that, so it does require some help. But the whole idea is that it will become a part of your community. We don't look for employees that live 40, 50 miles away, we look for employees that are close, and the fact that you have agricultural employees makes it win-win. Also, as Bob mentioned, we do CDC overlay maps, the Center for Disease Control, to ensure we're not putting it in the wrong place, and Dayton has come up because of just some of the statistics Bob quoted, the fact that there are certain issues with certain cancers. As I've done this throughout the state, it is stunning to find out specifics about some of this. Also, some of the soil, let me just give you one quick anecdotal story. UMass has an agronomy, an agricultural school, and a PhD agronomy student decided to test the soil for heavy metals around just UMass Amherst. Did 10 samples throughout the campus, all of them came back so polluted with heavy metals, it caused a tremendous amount of concern. So one of our biggest, biggest studies will be how to ensure that we can grow it safely here. It will be based in soil, because it has to be organic, but we will be making sure that all testing is done completely, that nothing will leave without us knowing it is safe to be consumed, it is packaged correctly, it is dosed correctly, and in the event there's any sort of recall necessary, there's a batch and lot number, so nothing escapes. I would like to answer any questions anyone might have, I feel like...
I have a question.
That's a lot of information, of course.
If nobody minds. I just wanted to know, does anybody have any idea or thoughts on whether or not, once recreational facilities are up and running, which, you know, is in the future granted, whether medical facilities expect to be in competition with them, or...
Great question, and I've got a great answer. In the Commonwealth, if you have one of a number of diseases, you can get a medical marijuana card for $50. Then, so let's say you walk into a dispensary and you want to purchase an ounce of marijuana. Because medicine can't be taxed, medical marijuana would be 300. That same package put on the recreational side is subject to the 6.25% mass sales tax, the 3.75% marijuana commission tax, and then the 2% tax that's giving, given to the town for hosting. So if you were to walk in, medical marijuana, that ounce would cost you 300, recreational marijuana would cost you $336, so essentially, you'd pay for your card the first visit. So I don't think recreational will come and will be large, but I don't think to start in the next three years, it's going to be that huge boom that everyone expects. It will obviously grow quickly, but there's a moratorium on it for now, it won't even be around until October of 2018, and it'll be very controlled. Right now, the legislators are debating a number of bills to figure out what would be the best way to ensure this adequate regulation and proper supervision of the people holding licenses.
And that'll be a totally separate process.
Totally separate.
So this medical marijuana would not necessarily lead to a recreational marijuana facility? I just want to make that clear, right?
Correct. The people that have undertaken the medical marijuana licensing will get first option on recreational, but that doesn't mean, here it is, you're now in a recreational business, you have to apply, same as you did before. They will be visible, they will generate tremendous revenue. One of the concerns was about traffic, which is a very good concern, but doing the studies I have, the average dispensary will see fewer cars than any average Dunkin' Donuts does between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:20 AM. So in 20 minutes in the morning, Dunkin' Donuts gets more cars than an average dispensary will get all hours that it's open during the day. Please, any questions? There's no bad questions, there are only unanswered questions, yes?
And this may be something as a takeaway, but I didn't see anything in your packet about market share, future growth, what does success look like for your company, the other three, the forecast, in terms of revenue, expenses, and that type of thing?
Generally, the financial information is, will be available when it occurs, we've done, you know, some modeling, but because we're not-for-profit, we have to put our financials out, it's mandated by the state. Where's the, I'm sorry, where are we hoping for?
Yes, with Dayton, you know, what do you see the market?
Well, one thing you have to understand is that there's no geography in Massachusetts. In other words, let's say you're a patient in Amherst, you can buy from this dispensary. It's very hard to predict based on, you know, just the first go-around, but the average dispensary in Massachusetts, within 18 months, will be grossing approximately a million dollars. dollars a month.
And are you able, do they give you statistics about whether these medical marijuana cards are an issue?
Yeah. They're all, that's totally available from the state.
On those lines that, this area?
The other thing I wanted to point out is that one of the single biggest cost components of our financial model is the real estate, you know, the lease, not only for the dispensaries, we're trying to get three dispensaries, but it's also the cultivation center. So even from the standpoint of submitting my final sighting profile to the state, I can't do it until I nail down my real estate, because those numbers vary dramatically, as you can imagine.
We all estimate, we do it every day.
No, 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 we, no, we're, we're good estimators, but the state doesn't want to see an estimate, they want to see, and I have, trust me, I've got optimistic, pessimistic, and likely scenarios going for each of my financial models. So it's like, you know, we're just kind of, but, you know, it's, once, once we submit that application, we've got to lock those down, so.
Are your three potential sites spread out from one another?
Yes.
I wanted just to address very briefly, how many patients would we find, Dyton? The issue has been, there's under 40,000 patients registered. If we go nationwide, you'll find that there's a 2% take rate state by state. So for example, in Massachusetts, with six and a half million residents, it's expected by the time the dispensaries are all open, there'll be 130,000 patients registered. Unfortunately, there's only 11 dispensaries currently open. The majority of them are only open part-time, and they also limit what you can purchase because the demand is so great. So there are probably a lot of people in Dyton that haven't even bothered getting a card because there's nowhere close to buy it, and there's not enough supply. So it would be more of a lesson in frustration than any kind of medical resolution.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, of course.
One of my relatives has a child that is on medical marijuana in this town, and for epilepsy, he's severely handicapped, and they have to go up to Boston to get the oil, which is quite a drive when you work and when you are dealing with a child, but, you know, obviously family helps. But, that's the distance.
I have a couple of comments, too. What I wanted to address about the education. And here in Eastern Mass, we have two schools, one is Northeast Institute of Cannabis and Natick, and one is the Women's Grassroots Institute in Randolph. I've attended both, and continue my studies with the Randolph School because of the geography and the time schedule, and they're preparing people to work in the industry. So, yes, you do need an education to work in dispensaries and grow houses. Also, along the lines of, you know, talking about how many people are now certified to use medical marijuana, there are eight K-N-C-A dot locations, and I know there are more groups that will certify you through medical marijuana card, one being in Fall River, one being in Seacom. I've been in the healthcare field for over 20 years, and a client of mine last night said to me, she waited six hours in Seacom to get her card. And then she had to go to the closest dispensaries in Rockton, and that's where she has to go to get her product.
It seems like the bottom line is providers in many instances, you know, and they don't just, and they don't write prescriptions necessarily, they write recommendations, because a prescription, I guess, is a federally sanctioned process, so they write recommendations. But when you, if you can go onto the Mass site, you can see the level of new providers that are certified, because a physician has to get certified in order to be able to write a recommendation. That number is growing very slowly. It's growing, as are cardholders growing, but I think that's the bottom line. How many are there, 160 or something like that, statewide?
Dogs, that's, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, so.
Mine must have stayed aligned with it?
No.
No, I don't think the, is there reciprocity in Mass?
Maybe Rhode Island. Rhode Island, but it's a very short amount, it's like a 30-day reciprocity.
Oh, maybe it is as well.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spencer. Is the community host agreement like a fixed term? Is this something indefinite that just rolls on and on? How does that work?
To be negotiated.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what you'll find in most community hosting agreements is, one immediate out clause is recreational marijuana. So the fact is, if the town decides to, you know, now understands the law, the law's baked in, and they want to do something, then I think we're back at the table automatically to kind of, you know, talk through that, because the revenue, the revenue equation will change dramatically.
But probably Green Harbor would prefer, I mean, any new business would prefer stability. So you would probably prefer something that, you know, is out into the, out into the foreseeable future, and I understand that.
Let me, can I just talk about the two locations that we're looking at very quickly? Because we're, we're looking at 620 Spring Street for our cultivation facility. The building has a couple of segments that are available. We're looking for roughly 37,000 square feet of cultivation space there. We're also looking at the Princess House for our dispensary location. The Princess House, I believe, is in the current designated zone, RMD zone. The Spring Street location is not. I think it's light industrial or industrial, but it's not necessarily a, the RMD zone.
Would that be more headaches for Green Harbor if, for whatever reason, you preferred to go with the Spring Street in terms of getting all the permits and all that?
That's really a question for you, as to whether, whether the planning commission and the zoning board and the economic development group are, you know, easy to work with. We're prepared to go the distance to get, to get those approvals. But it, you know, it just, the question is, is the town willing to consider possibly a rezoning of a building like Spring Street? And if so, then yes, we'd like to sit down and learn more and talk through the process. If you're not, if you say, no, these are the only locations we have, well then, equipped with that information, we'll, you know, make a business decision.
I'd like to say it'd be kind of difficult to change the zoning from 620 Spring Street, very difficult. Takes a two-thirds majority of annual town meeting. It's the most populated area in town, there's a lot of kids in that area. I would be against it.
Okay.
So is there, we've talked about the state and about the oversight, is there any federal agent, agency like FDA that has anything to say about growing and dispensing?
Absolutely not, right?
No?
Right now, the only oversight is done pretty much by the DEA and Department of Justice.
Okay.
It is still scheduled as a Class 1 substance, so federally it's illegal.
Would it be a medical doctor or a DO that would, I don't know if you say write the prescription, but would it be a reference from a?
Yes.
Yes, and it has to be a doctor-patient relationship. Before, in a number of states, you'd see people setting up card tables in front of dispensaries, doctors, and literally just handing you a card. In Massachusetts, it's mandated it is a doctor-patient relationship, not just, hey, I got a pain in my neck, we're working the referral. They review your records, it's a continuing relationship, not that you become their only physician.
Right.
You have to have a real patient relationship with them.
Like a primary care?
Yep.
That you see regularly?
Correct.
Yep.
I just have one last question, and I apologize. Thank you for being so willing to answer my questions. I know you keep saying and/or, so you want the dispensary and/or the cultivation site. How locked in is Green Harbor? And mind you, I have no jurisdiction over whether either comes or both comes, but I just am curious, you really, Green Harbor prefers to have both as like a package deal, right?
If we can, yeah, yep. And I, just one thing I wanted to point out is that the Spring Street location would be cultivation only. Several of the towns that we've spoken to have special designations for grow versus dispensary. Dispensary is where all of the real activity is, and as, you know, using Bob's, you know, description of the facility, it's essentially a unidentified warehouse where, you know, 15 to 25 employees, you know, show up for work every day, but it's not, it doesn't have clearly the traffic or the visibility to the public that, that others have. And since it is a cultivation site, often it is, it can be nested in an agricultural zone as well. So I, I'm not that well-versed in your, in your town zoning, but something to think about.
Thank you.
On the Spring Street site, the way the factories, you're looking at Warner Boulevard, you're not looking at Spring Street, you're looking at Warner Boulevard, they go in the back because of work, everything's located.
Is it up on the second floor? I'm not, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's the second floor.
The dogs and whatnot.
I don't think anything's off the table. I mean, you know, we can, we can try to deal with that, but that, again, that's zoning and planning and...
It's just more hoops to jump through, to get things rezoned and whatnot.
So I guess, what do you need from us, I guess?
Well, I mean, in the perfect world, I'd love a letter of approval or non-opposition to proceed, but I think I'd be more than happy to have more conversations to understand a little bit more about your process, your needs, your requirements. We could also have a discussion around the community hosting agreement, because I think it's probably important for you to begin to get your head around that. But the goal being that, you know, and I don't know if this is realistic or unrealistic based on people's schedules, but, you know, maybe in the next 30 days, having some, you know, a letter of approval or non-opposition from the town, I don't know. I mean...
Do you need that before you go to the other boards?
Yes.
You need the letter of approval before you go to planning?
We need the, we need the letter to go to DPH.
Oh, okay.
And all that basically says is, as a town, we're okay with the Green Harbor, and we've negotiated a community hosting agreement, we're fine with the commercial relationship, and now Green Harbor is going to start the planning process, the permitting process, the special permitting process, where we are now going into our pockets, paying for architects, engineers, et cetera, to kind of, you know, build out the space.
Have you thought about scheduling a public meeting? I mean, this is the selectments meeting, and this is the first public presentation, but as a board, we have to get input, feedback from town residents, not only people that live in the north end. And I'm just wondering if you could think about coming up with a date when there could be a public meeting, and anybody, any resident come in and ask questions and, and do all of that. I think it's important that you hear from more townspeople, if they choose. That's what I'm thinking of.
I think that's fine. We were actually having a conversation out in the hall, because, you know, it really is very town-specific, because a lot of towns, when they first decided to zone RMDs, medical, that's when they had their town meeting, because of the gentleman, you know, because they were changing the zoning, and they had a special town meeting, and they also used that opportunity to have a discussion, you know, often, you know, a heated discussion about the pros and cons of medical marijuana in their town. Other towns just rubber-stamped the zone and said, yeah, sure, we have to designate a zone, here's the zone. They put it in the, maybe it was an item on the town meeting, but there wasn't a lot of debate. So if that's what it requires, Nancy, that's what we...
Well, I'm just suggesting it because we did go through the process, and we went to town meeting, and a bylaw was passed, and the site was designated. That was then. But now, we actually have a company that's saying, we would like to come in, and that's why I'm saying, just a general meeting for the people to have some input. Because as I say, we're, we're being broadcast live tonight, and this will run for the next week. So more people are going to get to see this meeting that may not know what was on the agenda tonight in detail. And now they may say, oh, I'd like to talk about that, or send an email to the board, or just, just something. That's what I'm saying.
So we can, we can discuss offline and come up with some, some times it might work in...
Absolutely. I mean, I know you have to give notices about when these meetings take place, so yes, we'll, we'll be happy to work with you on that.
Okay, yeah.
They will also be making a presentation to the planning board on the Thursday, Wednesday night.
This is just informational like it is tonight?
Like tonight. So, you know, people that are watching and they want to get that, they also have that opportunity.
And now they know a little bit more, so.
Yep.
I mean, have you checked with the Princess House to see if they would have the adequate amount of square footers that you are requiring to do both?
They do.
To do both?
They do.
All right.
Is there a reason why you chose Spring?
I don't think they chose.
The street versus the Princess House, where it's already designated for that?
I think, I think...
I don't see, is not enough space.
Oh, so they do not have enough space?
Well, they're actually, I talked to Mr. Perius, and he's checking with his headquarters to see whether, what leases are up, coming up, seeing if they do have the space, because the Spring Street property affords them a starter of 30 to 35, 37,000 square feet, and on the same floor, another 30,000. So they can take an option on expansion and grow in the same location.
Yeah.
And the, because it was cultivation only, we, until we saw the bylaws, we didn't realize about the overlay, but because it's cultivation only, in some towns, they consider that an active use or industrial use, and since they're not dispensing the product, they don't consider it an RMD location. So the town has to make the decision how they want to treat that, and that's, first step is to present, and then work through with the town on the steps that they require.
I mean, every one of these meetings, we learn something about, you know, what we, what we need to do, or consider, or refarcal as part of our plan, so this meeting is not unlike other meetings we've had. So it's been very valuable to meet with you and hear your questions and thoughts. And, yeah, if there's any, I'll reach out to you, Jack, and we'll, we'll talk about next steps.
Sure.
I'd like to say one more thing, sure. You know, I didn't mean to rain on your parade, but 620 Spring Street is near my house, and I'm totally against the zoning change, but I'm not against maybe an overlay district, okay? And I'm not against Green Harbor at all. I think it's a great idea, and our town welcomes new business, but I am very positive the zoning changes.
Yeah, I don't think it's applying an overlay to that.
Right. I want that industrial, overlay to stay industrial, all right? Okay? I don't want to say, you know, you want to put an overlay district to make it okay to grow marijuana? I don't have a problem with that. But to change the zone totally, I would, and you'd have a fight on the ends of your boots.
Yeah, I would think that is, from Heidi, it's out of that.
Another thing I would like to make clear, because the attorney over here was talking a lot about medical marijuana cards, and...
They're not for everybody.
And if you have a license to carry a gun, you may not want to have a medical marijuana card. And I don't really care what the attorney down there tells you. The federal government has a lot of power, and if you fail your gun ownership, you don't want to play around with this stuff, okay? And the prices that he talked about, it's high.
This is, Woody, that's way down the road.
I have one last question. Is this type of business considered light industry?
Oh, I would think so.
Grow Center would be like hydrobiotics, aquabodies, growing fish and plants in an industrial setting.
Okay.
So quite a few industrial zones allow for plant and fish growth.
Okay, great. I mean, that's very good information for us, and you go to planning and talk to them, and in the meantime, you and I can touch base and come up with something to...
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur.
I like that.
I know it's...
Jack, I gotta congratulate you, and you've passed all the tests so far, you just have one more, and you must be a judge at the Dyton Cow Chip Festival. Every freshman representative... That every freshman representative, senator, or selectman have done their due duty. And to see if you can be a judge at the Cow Chip Festival and earn your sweatshirt.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make one suggestion for you. For the meeting after, you will be requested to wear said shirt. Please wear a collared, nice shirt underneath it.
I don't need a tie.
No tie.
And no tie.
Eyes are gone.
But there's one more, there's one more thing. You have to get there ahead of when the contest starts because you have to be trained, and Mr. Polini will train you. He will have a...
I'm sure he will.
There's a heart.
A miniature cow there.
We've been, we've been educated in defecation, so...
We'll leave it at that. Okay, Mr. Volmich, by the invite, appointment, whatever it is.
And you're going to be there?
The honor, it's an honor.
It's an honor.
You've been, you've been granted and identified to receive this honor.
I would do it again, but then I would be denying you the pleasure.
See, I'm also a member of Lions Club, so I'll be here working as well. I just take time from my, whatever work shift I am.
We get you assigned all around the time. I gotta go back to work.
Thank you.
I was waiting for this.
I was wondering when it was coming.
The other thing I want to say, I guess in public input, I meant to say it earlier, I want to thank all the administrative professionals that we have and that work in Dyton. The town wouldn't function without you. You're an essential part of town government, and we appreciate all that you do, no matter where you work, water department, sewer department, town garage, or here in town hall, in the schools, whatever. So we really appreciate your help and really support you. Okay. Old business. Got a couple of appointments to make.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion...
Stop, wait a minute. Mr. Giovanni. Excuse me, Mr. Gavoni. Sorry, Mr. Gavoni. He's for us on the agenda. So, Mr. Chairman, I made a motion that we appoint Dennis Gavoni to the Open Space Committee.
I second that.
Got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Joe Tammerkin to the Open Space Committee.
Second.
Got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Well, thank you both for volunteering for the Open Space Committee. I think it must defer to me, I'm very partial to that committee. Very important committee, and it'd be great to have you on board and get that committee moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, is this, are there any additional vacancies on the Open Space Committee?
We're checking on that.
Okay.
I think we...
I think this is fine, though.
I know there's, yeah, I think there probably is. I don't think there's a limit on the number of people you can have in that committee, so we certainly welcome anybody that's interested to come down, fill out a volunteer form, and we'll get you appointed. Okay, new business. Got a bunch of appointments to hear, to make here. Change it to Soil Commission. Okay, this is a, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jim Agia, our Building Inspector, to the Soil Conservation Commission.
As a full-time member?
As a full-time member, please.
But if there's already...
Through the end of June, right?
Through the end of June.
What we've talked about, we have a full committee, but Mr. Agia acts as an advisor to the Soil Commission. And so I will make a motion that we appoint Mr. Agia as an alternate member to the Soil Conservation Commission, so that if a member is unable to serve at a particular meeting, Mr. Agia can sit in. And this will just be through the end of the fiscal year, until we make our annual appointments.
So we just, we need revise that a little bit, but...
So it'll just be alternate, alternate member. Alternate member, yes, that's my motion.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, we just need to change that to alternative.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Hey, this is volunteer request from Ronald Smith, and his volunteer request is just to be a, a general volunteer, to work in the town hall. Most of his time will probably be spent down in the cable room, working with the folks down there to help him out. He's very talented, he's, he's worked here for a number of years doing this kind of stuff, so I would entertain a motion for Ronald Smith to be a general volunteer.
So I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make mention that I'm glad that Mr. Smith has offered to be a, a general volunteer because he has talents in several areas. And just to remind everybody, he's the gentleman that we called on to do the Tuffy the Train video for the Christmas show that we were running, so that was...
On YouTube, folks.
He was just, again, just a vol, a talented person who we asked, and he said, I'll do it. So we can use his talent.
Absolutely.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We signed that out. Okay, next item. Dissolve, dissolve the Board of Health Organizational Committee. Now, this is a committee that was established after last town meeting, when it was voted on to separate the Board of Health from the Selectmen. And so this committee was established, they've done their work, they've made recommendations we've approved, the separation of the two boards, so there is no longer a need for this committee. So I would entertain a motion to dissolve the Board of Health Organizational Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You're off the hook, gentlemen.
We should have thought of a third judge.
Does it interview in screen?
Ron, if you're out there, we have, we have other plans for you.
We can always, we can always rescind that vote if we think of something.
Okay. We have a recommendation from the Historical Commission to appoint Lisa Lodge Fletcher to the Horseshoe Storage Commission.
Well, that's good. That's had vacancies.
So I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. We got a road opening permit for Columbia Gas at the corner of Pearl Street and School Street.
Thank you.
So, so permission is being asked to do a road cut at the corner of Pearl Street and School Street, an end cap transition remediation. And that will be coordinated with the Highway Superintendent. And they will be, he'll be notified 72 hours before they intend to make that cut, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Oh, we have to sign that.
It's got to be redone.
Oh. Okay.
Do we have to sign it at the meeting so I can go up?
No. No, so I'm, do we have other things to sign here?
Yeah, there's several, I just figured we'd get through this, and then we can sign them after. Okay, we have another appointment here. Point Donna Culpa as the Spread...
Serpeth.
Serpeth, Commissioner, Commission Member.
We have folks coming out of the woodwork.
And what is, Serpeth is the southeastern regional planning and economic development district. And Donna, Donna Culpa has agreed, and so we want to make her, appoint her as a Commission Member. So I would entertain a motion of such.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Ms. Culpa.
Okay, that's all the new business. Under announcements, just a couple of things. We, earlier today, we had a Board of Health meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting combined. And at that meeting, we officially separated the two boards effective today. So as we speak, the new Board of Health is downstairs having their first Board of Health meeting that doesn't include the Selectmen, so we appreciate you, you doing that, everybody. And the... The Board of Health is now accepting applications for appointment to the Board of Health.
I thought they were coming to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I don't think, but we, we're not sure, we had a committee together first, though. So we're gonna, we're gonna skip that.
Move to table.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna table the, the announcement was Board of Health is now accepting application for appointment to the Board of Health effective July 1st. And what we think we want to do, we'll discuss it, we probably want to have a, a search committee to interview people that might apply for that. So as soon as we get that straightened out, we'll put the, we'll make the notice. Another May zoning board meeting...
You have to read the announcements.
Oh. Okay.
Get a second.
Get a second?
I seconded it already.
Okay, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries to table. The May zoning board meeting will take place on May 24th, the fourth Wednesday of May, instead of the usual third Wednesday of the month. Why don't we do some of the rest of the announcements at this point?
All right. Here are the announcements. Trash bags, shops disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Please call 508-669-6431 for more information. Burning season is now through May 1st, 2017. Permits may be obtained at Dyton Fire Station, 300 Main Street for $10. Please make checks payable to the Town of Dyton, and please remember, checks only. There are vacancies on the Historical Commission, Cable Commission, Open Space Committee, Land Use Committee, Green Communities Grant Committee, and the Cemetery Commission. Also, the Community Preservation Committee has an opening for a Historical Commission representative and a possible opening for an at-large member.
And I would just like to emphasize that we really need volunteers for these committees, particularly at this point, the Cable Committee. Tonight, there, there was only one person working down there, we had to call in the reserves, so we really need people to step up and participate in some of these committees. And it's actually, the Cable Committee is a very interesting committee. You get to record these and also have some say in, in how we move forward with that, that committee and what it's going to do, so.
The Town of Dyton Neighborhood Cleanup is going to occur on this Saturday, April 29th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Please meet at the transfer station on Tremont Street. Bring gloves, and please wear appropriate clothing. Please be mindful, we have discussed reports of increased tick populations out there, so please dress accordingly. There will be a rabies clinic on Saturday, April 29th, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the North Dyton Fire Station. $12 for immunizations, cash only, please. The town clerk will also be available at that time for dog licensing. Dyton Rehoboth High School is holding a recycling event at the school on April 29th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., where you can dispose of items such as VCRs, printers, monitors, and TVs. Prices range from $10 to $40. Information is posted at Town Hall. The Bristol Agricultural High School is holding a spring exposition on Saturday, May 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 135 Center Street in Dyton. Highlights include a farmer's market and a vendor expo, live animal exhibits, and a gourmet food truck, and also a plant sale. Bulky items, curbside pickup is scheduled for the week of May 22nd through May 29th. Tags for items are available for sale in the Selectmen's office, and it does follow your ordinary trash pickup schedule. Dyton Fire Association will be hosting a Touch a Truck event on Saturday, June 3rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the grounds of Mannheim, New England. Free admission to the event. Children can get an up-close look and climb aboard many of the supersized vehicles. Dyton Fire Association will also be collecting donations for the Shriners Hospitals for Children. Mannheim will also be hosting a blood drive on the same day, Saturday, June 3rd. Free pancake breakfast with a blood donation. And I do just want to add for the folks watching at home, a lot of these events that we've mentioned here tonight are on the Town of Dyton Facebook site. So if you indicate that you're going to it, it'll automatically give you a reminder, so you don't need to play back the Selectmen's meeting to be reminded of the event. So I did just want folks to know that.
And I really want to thank Brett again for all the work he's done to get these things up here. He created a Town of Dyton Facebook page, and we've had, how many likes on that?
Almost 500.
500, so appreciate that. I want to mention two other, two other things that weren't on here. The, they're having an informational session at the library on this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. to talk about the, the plans for a new library somewhere down the road. So it'd be very interesting to, for you people to attend that and see what, what the library is looking at and what their plans are. So there's an informational meeting at 11:00 a.m. this Saturday, April 29th, and another one at 7:00 p.m. on, I think that's Tuesday, May 2nd. So if you can get to one of those sessions, I think it'd be very interesting, and you can see what they're, what they're thinking, so.
And also, the Cow Chip Festival this year is June 2, 3, and 4. So those of you who enjoy that event, come on down.
And, and while we're talking about Lions stuff, the Dyton Lions Annual Auction occurs this Saturday, beginning at, I think, 9 o'clock, down at the town garage. And welcome to come down and purchase what you like. So we've got a lot of stuff.
29th is a busy day.
It's a very busy day.
It is a really busy day. And I do just want to emphasize, folks, again, all these events are literally posted on our official Facebook page. All you have to do is like the page, you'll be reminded of all these upcoming events. Even the ones we didn't mention here, they are on the Facebook page, so you will find all that information there.
On the, on the Touch a Truck event that the Dyton firefighters are hosting, they are, it's free admission, but they are asking for either donations, monetary donations, or donation of toys. If you are thinking about donating a toy, please get in touch with Tom Maderis about the type of toy, because they can only accept certain kinds of, for example, teddy bears. They have to, the eyes and the nose, or whatever is on these stuffed animals, must meet certain criteria so that small children can't remove them, and this choking hazard. So again, if you're thinking about a toy, please get in touch with Tom Maderis at the Main Street Fire Station first.
I also believe he did upload a list of acceptable, like, kind of what Shriners was looking for, for donations. So that information is also there, and I want to thank Tom for posting that and making that so readily available.
Thank you, both.
Thank you.
We also have a correspondent from the United Way.
Thank you.
I just think, we, we got this letter from United Way, and I think it's just worth mentioning that, you know, the United Way of Greater Albor and Taunton serves our area. And just a couple of interesting things here. They have provided some sort of benefits to 527 Dyton residents over the last year, and that could be in a number of different forms. So we really appreciate what the United Way does, and we want to thank them for supporting our community. And we want to thank the people that contribute to United Way so that they can support people in our community that, that need their assistance, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a couple of donations, I think? Or we have? Or do we have reports? Any, either one of you have any reports to make?
I don't have any reports, but I do want folks to know, Administrative Assistant Karen Brady has handed me a list of the items. I will post this on the website for everybody as well. Thank you very much.
I did see Tom Maderis last, this past Monday, because we made sojourn bears, and I spoke to the people that make the bears, and Alice, and I showed him to Tom, and Tom said he believes that the eyes and nose would meet the safe... said he believes that the eyes and nose would meet the safety criteria. So next month of May, when we do sojourn bears, which I believe is Monday, May 22nd at 10:30, we will be making bears for the Shriners Hospital.
That's very nice.
That's great.
I'm glad they don't make, they are not, probably not accepting the ones with those hard eyes that could literally injure someone. I remember my.
They're specially made and anchored.
Nice.
Okay, next item. We have a couple of donations here. Actually, there's two donations, $500 each. One for $500 to the Police Department in memory of Nelson and Shirley Munier, and another one for the same amount of $500 in memory of the same couple, Nelson and Shirley Munier, to the Fire Department. So we want to thank you for that donation, and it will be put to good use. So I guess we have to.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we acknowledge a $500 donation to the Police Department and a $500 donation to the Fire Department, both in memory of Nelson and Shirley Munier, contributed by their family.
I second that.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for your generous donation to the Munier family.
Next meeting we have is approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 5th.
If we can table it.
Okay, so we make a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion to table the minute, the approval of the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve warrant number 43A-17 in the amount of $79,651.25 dated April 26, 2017 payroll. Warrant number 43B-17 in the amount of $20,463.8 dated April 26, 2017. And warrant number 43C-17 in the amount of $165,916.58 dated April 26, 2017. And I believe the last two are both accounts payable.
No, just the last.
Oh, excuse me.
The $20,000 is the month-end payroll for people that just get paid once a month. I'll second the motion.
Got a motion? And a second, hopefully?
And I second you.
No, you made the motion. I seconded it.
Okay. I'm confused.
You're mixing us up.
We look alike, so.
I'm trying to make this go smoothly, and I've not done a very good job of it, anyway. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess we don't have any more public input.
We don't have any public.
Nobody public here.
They left with Green Harbor.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good night, Cable.
Good night, Cable.
Thank you.
We fit a lot into almost an hour.
Yeah.
Wow, that time flies.